I was gonna go to the other one, but which room? He's first.
Interesting in your meeting, I just wish you guys would be more.
Morning, Mr. Manager. You all set?
Well, Chairman, we have four things this morning, and we might go a little bit out of order because I don't see Chris Laborm here yet. So, we want to talk about, maybe Lonnie wants to go.
Lonnie Wright, please take a seat in the back.
Hey, Lonnie, you wanna come up here? I've got this for you.
We want to talk about the plumbing board assignments when Chris gets here. The sheriff wants to update the commission on some of the Odyssey software issues that both he and the DA and the courts to some degree are having some issues with. Then we're gonna talk about legislative platform update. We'll save that till the end. And then the agenda, I just want to quickly cover the agenda for December the 4th. It is extremely light. In fact, we have no new business items for December 4th currently, but Commissioner Howe's gonna be out of town, so we tried to keep that light. But we can talk about that, too. So, with that, without Chris here, Sheriff, can you go first and talk to us about some of the challenges with the Odyssey platform?
Morning, Sheriff Fisher.
Morning. The reason, if you don't mind, if I come up here is because I got some list of items that how this is affecting. So, here, a little over a year ago, the Supreme Court decided that they needed a new system for RMS for courts. And so, without any input from really any of the partners, they chose Odyssey, which is Tyler Technologies' product. We have found out, because they've started rolling this out in other places, that law enforcement, and I use that term a little bit loosely, so that includes the DA's office, pre-sentence investigation, probation officers, the trustees' office, us, police department, a whole, and some other folks that have access to full court, we will no longer have access to it. We'll have the public view, which means we can't get into anything. And so, it's now being rolled out in Shawnee County. It was fine. It's based upon, it's fine for like Gove County, Sumner County, Harvey County, that doesn't do too many cases. It works just fine there. For jurisdictions like ours and Wyandotte and Johnson, Johnson opted out of it because they have their own system, so they don't have to do it. In Shawnee, it is a huge issue. And so, when we talk about this, basically, the trustees' office, and I'll start there, they're the ones that collect child support payments, any restitution payments. All of their work is done through full court. The trustees' office will go away because they can't access it. Pre-sentence investigation or pre-sentence, when people are put on PSI, when they're released from jail, well, all of their work is done through full court. There's no way that they're going to be able to do their job. Probation officer is the same thing. They aren't gonna be able to enter full court. From the sheriff's office standpoint, I have about two and a half pages here of how this affects the way we do business. And so, currently, in the morning, when we have, we gather up all the inmates that are supposed to go to court, and we have them in a holding cells down in the jail, we are in, we have what's called the book. And the book is the one that figures out which courtroom they have to be at, all those type of things. Well, that's all done through full court because everything's located in full court to be able to do that job. Basically, my contention is, well, that goes back to the court system because we were kinda doing them a favor anyway by doing that because we ran it a lot smoother than we've been doing it for years. Some of the biggest issues, though, like I said, I could go over numerous issues here, but the biggest issues are PFAs and PFSs, so the protection from abuse and the protection from stalking orders. Unfortunately, and I say this in jest a little bit, those things, there's really not a lot of investigation in that. Someone comes up and claims whatever, a judge signs it, it's kinda written into an order, and downstairs it goes. We get hundreds and hundreds of those a month. We will no longer be able to, at night, when, say, the paperwork hasn't been drawn up yet completely, we will no longer be able to go into full court. So, if an officer or deputy out on the street says, hey, this lady or male says that there's a PFA or PFS that they just filed, can you confirm that so we can actually serve it? Because the other party's here. There's no way to do that now, which, that is a huge issue when it comes to domestic violence and those type of things. The other problem is, is that if you have a warrant, the first thing that we do in records and also in Spider over PD, they go into full court to confirm the warrant, to make sure that it's actually still there. IC, we won't be able to do that at night anymore either. And basically, what's going to happen, is if we continue on this road, we're gonna have to talk about forty people in courtrooms, that's expensive state, but it doesn't seem to me that we're going forward, we're going backwards. There's been several discussions with the Supreme Court Justice who's been put in charge of this project, several complaints, and the last word we got was, not my problem, get it done, don't want to hear about it. And so, what we've done now is, is the DA's office, and there's a whole litany of issues with the DA's office, and I don't want to speak necessarily on his behalf, but, I mean, they're in full court, every attorney's in full court every day. There's a lot of things that we do in records. The reason we have to have full court in records for warrants specifically is, a lot of times, there's information that's not correct that's entered in there. So, we have to go into full court and then re-enter the information that the court system didn't put into the warrant. Like, there was five charges, and there's only one charge sitting there. Well, that makes a big difference when they get booked and what the bond should be. And so, we're kinda the checks and balances of that system because it doesn't always get entered correctly by the court system. And so, the DA's office has authored a letter, have sent it up to the project manager, because the project manager keeps telling us, well, I really don't have anything to do with it. And the term is policymakers are the ones making the policy, and right now, they don't see the need for you guys to have this access. The policymakers are the Supreme Court. And so, we're authoring our letter, and we should have it sent out today along with letters from the court system and these other entities that are gonna be affected. So, we're hoping to get an audience up there with policymakers to say, these are all the issues you're creating for us, and you're messing up a system that actually runs pretty decently right now. So, that's where we're at.
Do you want a letter from Sedgwick County Commission?
We could. Let me get with Mark and Judge Garing, because I think that that could be very useful. They're not listening to our judge right now at all, so I don't know if they'll listen to anything, but hey, it's worth a shot, in my opinion.
And how long is full court gonna still be available to you?
Excuse me. They're supposed to start our switch over sometime in March or April. So, and the problem we have is, is that, excuse me, the problem we have is Johnson County has their own system for everything. That's how they can opt out. Our problem is, is full court is the system for the state. And so, it won't be supported anymore, any of those type of things. So, it's not a viable system for us to opt out and to keep. And so, you know, the only other option there is, is if we did some type, you know, we're revamping our RMS system, is that, you know, we did some type of RMS system for the courts, but that's very expensive. And so, right now, we're stuck with taking what the state has given us.
Can, as we're building our RMS system, can we put some kind of a bridge between our RMS system that we're building and the Odyssey system?
Yes. The problem is, will they give us access? The problem isn't the API to talk back and forth. The problem is, right now, their rule is, nobody but court service people will have access to Odyssey. Everybody else will get the public view. So, you, as a citizen, wanna go look up something which is very bare, minimal information, that's what we get as well. That's their rule.
Well, I think all the commissioners would agree that we wouldn't mind signing a letter out ourselves. I don't, is there any questions from any of the other commissioners?
Wes, have you weighed in on this? Are you aware of all this?
We're aware of it, and we've reached out to their counterpart, Chief Information Officer of the state, and get some response. It's not a legislative thing, we're only gonna get certain access.
Legislative or?
It's not legislative, but yeah.
Supreme Court.
Yeah.
And it's out of his hands, too.
Is it one justice in the Supreme Court that's in charge? Or is it the Supreme Court?
Well, Justice Nuss, this is, they made the decision, and Justice Nuss is kinda the one that's in charge of all administrative judges throughout the state. And so, but the project was passed down to another justice, and right now, they've said his name, I can't remember his name.
I just wonder if this is something that maybe we could ask Lieutenant Governor Lynn Rogers to step in and at least deliver a message. I mean, it impacts the whole state besides us.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions from commissioners?
You say, were you trying to name another judge, too?
I'm sorry?
Just Judge Nuss?
Yeah, I, no, Judge Nuss is the judge that is the Supreme.
Like the chief judge?
Yes, chief judge, and he's in charge of all administrative judges, but he assigned this task of Odyssey to another Supreme Court Justice, and I can't remember his name right now.
Caleb, Daniel, Eric, Carol, Marla?
I can't remember. I'm sorry. I'll find it out, though.
I just wanna know who, so we can pinpoint exactly who it is.
Yeah, and we're addressing our letters, so I'll be able to find that out for you, ma'am.
Okay. What does NCIC mean?
National Crime Information Computer. So, anything that, like a warrant that is granted by a judge, our record system has to then place that into NCIC, which is a database for the entire nation. And so, when you run somebody through a computer to see if they're wanted, in NCIC, that's where they find the warrant. And then, once they find the warrant there, then, for us, they go to the local full court to confirm what that warrant is.
You said the DA's office is sending a letter, you're sending a letter to the Supreme Court Justice? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
If that was the only thing I was gonna have. What was the biggest issue in Shawnee County?
Well, they're starting to find out this as well, that they have no access to full court, and they're a little bit smaller than us, but they use the system the same way, where they, their record section confirms warrants. The biggest and the scariest issue for me on this is the PFA and the PFS service, because at night, after five o'clock, we're not gonna be able to hand those out to folks that could be very dangerous to the other person. And so, our suggestion is, is the court service system, they're gonna have to have a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week court system that works nights, weekends, so that we have somebody to call, if this is the path that they want to go.
So, if somebody has their order in their car, though?
We still have to confirm.
So, that's not gonna be good enough?
Yeah, we still have to confirm it because there's people that make up fake orders.
Very good. Was that right?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Well, you mentioned earlier that Joko has opted out, and they have their own system. Do the courts allow them to have access to the records up there with whatever they're using?
Well, the court system up there is tied in with their own RMS, so they don't need, like, our system, we're not, we can't look up Lyon County's information. We can only look up our own information from this particular district court. If we want information from Lyon County on a court case, then we gotta call Lyon County Records to get all the information. So, Johnson County doesn't need our records. They only need theirs. And since they have their own internal RMS system, they don't need to be connected to Odyssey for anything.
I assume this is a pretty big issue in terms of the entire state. Everyone in your position probably feels the same way. Do the courts have a reason as to why they're changing this, that they can explain themselves?
Well, our understanding on why, full court has aged. I mean, it's not as good as some of the new systems. The whole issue is, is why don't we have access? Them changing the system, it's gonna be a better system than full court, but the whole issue is us getting access, just like we always have. I think it's gonna be a money issue, because even the court system said, they asked them how many licenses they needed, and the district court here said, well, we need about, I think it was 320, and they're like, we only bought 250, so you need to figure that out. So, it's a licensing issue to give the rest of us access, in my opinion. And it's a money issue, is what I believe the big issue is.
I think we ought to assign somebody to this problem, to dig into this as deeply as possible, to validate everything that we've heard this morning, and to challenge the state, you know, I think we need to have more information. This is a big issue, obviously.
It's a big issue, yes.
I mean, this information to us right now, saying that the state doesn't want to change her opinion, they made a decision, they got some software, and we're kinda stuck with this, and even us buying more software won't solve the problem.
No.
I think we need to dig in deep, and I think, I think that just receiving this information this morning is not very satisfying. What's our next step, other than writing a letter to the Supreme Court? Seems like we're stuck.
Okay. Well, I wanted to brought to your attention for two reasons, just politically, so that as we talk to people, Lieutenant Governor or whatever, we can let them know that this is struggles going on. And then, from a budgetary perspective, if this continues down the track, it is, it's true, the sheriff's right, the state takes on the brunt of the personnel costs, but the sheriff and DA could have to come to the table with some type of budget ask if this system continues to be pushed. We'll figure out, Commissioner Howe, to assign and support the sheriff and the DA on this. And then, if I'm hearing you right, Sheriff, there was always the option, when we went to get the new CAD system and the new RMS, we could've bought a court system, too, but it would've escalated the price significantly, which is basically what Johnson County did to skirt this issue.
But they've had that system for quite a while.
Right. And that's why they got permission from the Supreme Court. We would not get permission to go do that now. So, that ship has sailed. Okay. We'll assign somebody to this.
The other thing is, Chief Nuss is retiring, I think, or maybe already has retired, but it's, his position is changing out. So, if he's the one that signed the order, my opinion, that opens up an opportunity for whoever replaces him to reconsider this.
All right, very good.
Sheriff, is there, if we were talking anybody, is there an easy solution? Is there an easy suggestion that you would have?
Yeah, they grant us access. It's as simple as that, is they just grant the folks from, you have to understand that...
If you had access granted, where you could do it?
Yes.
Life should be normal again?
Yes. And what Odyssey is trying to tell us is, because, of course, they're one of the folks in the final three for the CAD and RMS system, oh, you go with us, and they've told other state entity or other counties, hey, you go with us, you'll have full access. That is not true, because the fact of the matter is, they are not granting us access. They just gotta flip a switch to grant us. And the problem is, is that all the detectives from all agencies around here are into full court, because they got to have full court access to work on their cases. And so, you throw that in, the record section, that is a lot of people that utilize full court. That's why I think it's a money issue for licensing, which comes down to the state paying for it. I think that is the main issue as to why they're doing this. We haven't had that confirmed, and they won't tell us that, but it was a telltale sign when they told the district court here, hey, we only bought 250 licenses, you need 320, there's a, that's a problem.
But that's the response that we...
Yes.
The underlying issue was, it wasn't budgeted in the project, provide additional licensing to give them their access.
But again, they didn't ask us either. They did all this on their own.
Very good. Well, thanks for bringing it to us.
Do you happen to know what budget that would come out of?
I have no idea. I don't know what budget the legislators gave the Supreme Court to do this system. I have no idea.
Okay.
Well, keep us informed. If you want a letter from the commission, I think we've got five commissioners that are ready to go onboard. If there's something else you need us to do, we'd be glad to do that.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys' support.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris, talk about the plumbing board.
Morning, Chris.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Yes, Chris Laborm, MABCD, and wanted to go over the plumbing board applicants. And I don't know, Mr. Schultz, have you provided the recommendations to the commissioners at this point?
No, you'll have to talk about it.
So, the copy of the email that I'm giving you, commissioners, is our recommendations, and that accounts for all of the applicants we had on the county side. We did have four master plumbers put applications in. We also have four master plumber positions. So, we broke this down based on their qualifications. We're recommending that Evan Lees be recommended to the residential position. His company does all things plumbing, but that, he was our most qualified of all applicants for the residential position. And then, we recommend meetings be a place in service and repair. That is the position he specifically requested and is the bulk of his business. The other two applicants, John Clark and Kirk Stoddard, were appointed to city positions in the industrial position and the system installation position, respectively. For remaining applicants, we had sole applicants for each position, Sean Conway as a mechanical engineer, Seth Harrington, who currently sits on the board as journeyman plumber, and Larry Doherty, who also currently sits on the board at the public at-large position. And so, we're recommending those all be appointed. Curtis Uncle also applied on the county side to be safe, but he's a master irrigation technician, and his position is actually a city appointment, and he was appointed to that position last week. For your information, the mayor did recommend, and the city council ratified, that Ray Frederick remain on the board as a mechanical contractor. Again, Chris Uncle is master lawn irrigation, John Clark, Kirk Stoddard in master plumber positions, and public at-large Larry Doherty at the city council meeting last week.
Very good. Questions for Chris?
Just want to clarify, these were like, were these advertised positions and through the at-large policy that we passed?
Yes, they were. So, we started to get the word out as soon as the plumbing board expansion was passed, got that out through the community as best we could. We delayed it a little bit so we could at least have a few weeks of advertising under the new policy. We still did not, of course, achieve the diversity that we're seeking on some of our boards. We did make progress. We had several interested members who expressed interest, but in the end, said they just don't have time at this point, but that they will look at appointments in the future.
It looks to me like basically two of these are new names.
That is correct.
Does that mean that our policy thing is up and going? It is, sweet.
Yes, and we're greatly appreciative of all of our applicants, because we actually had them apply a few different times in order to fill out the latest form and comply with the policy. So, they were all very willing to do that.
Where can I see this at? Where's it at?
The, do anybody know where we're at on the software acquisition? The policy that we're running so far is we advertise it and we market it. What we're still in the process of getting is the acquisition of the software, which will allow us to do this all online.
So, it's not currently on the website for people? It is? Okay, we can do this later.
And for clarification, ma'am, they, based on where we were at with the website, they could see it there, but they still emailed us the form that they applied with.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I'm just curious, out of these eight positions here, it shows that four of them are the sole applicants, but the other four doesn't say that. Does that mean there were multiple people applied for those positions? What does that mean?
So, with my master plumber, sir, the, we did have more than one apply. We had a position for every master plumber, though. So, they all qualified for the positions that were available. We put them in the one they were most qualified for. So, every county applicant received a position. There were two who applied for the city. We had another mechanical contractor apply on the city side, and then we had another master plumber put in a city application, and that individual actually works for and with John Clark. So, it made sense, of course, to pick one of those and not both. But again, we didn't have those applications on the county side.
All right, Chris, I don't see anything else now. This is normally not a public hearing today, but I noticed that we have two people in the audience that may be interested in this. I didn't know if either one of them would like to speak on this issue, either Lonnie or Wes.
I'm happy. What do I do, Wes?
You'll have to go up to...
You said one thing I want to say, I'm happy. (Laughter).
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Wes Gallion. I'm not opposing anything that's being done this morning. The one thing that I do want to bring up, though, that I think deserves to be thought about and people kept mindful of, these board, the work these boards do are really important. And sometimes, they have a tendency to draw individuals that were in the business that aren't actively engaged in the business anymore. So, and not that they couldn't serve, but I believe it's incumbent up on all of us if we're recommending individuals, are you looking at individuals, they be looked at in terms, are they actively engaged in the business, up to date in the business and in the field on what's going on, or is this just something they want to hang around and do? And that's an issue. And it's an issue every time with various boards. So, I would just say, I think we ought to be mindful that whoever's willing to do that, if they can spend the time, not just are able to spend the time, but actively engaged in the field and in the business, because there's things going on, product changing all the time, and people need to keep up on. And that's not always the case, but it's a point I think we ought to consider going down the road.
Thank you, Wes. Very good.
Okay. With that, I'll turn the microphone over to Mike. Okay.
Morning, Mr. Papun.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, county commissioners, Mike Papun, county counselor. We're getting to the point we need to start honing down our platform, especially if there's consideration of bringing something to the board on the December 4th meeting. Obviously, we'd probably still go to the December 11th, but I think for right now, shooting for December 4th. After last week's staff meeting, county manager, his staff met with me, and we discussed several of the corrections and behavioral health issues that we discussed last week. And what I did today was prepare something sort of in the form of the platform that we put together last year for legislators. And we can just go through this, and any modifications or thoughts that you have, just chime in, please. Priority issues, the thing we, one of the things we changed from the discussion last week on the chairman's comments, we've, number one, put the support for a regionalized state mental health facility as a number one issue, and then kept the community crisis center funding in while keeping two and three in, which Joan discussed last week, and Tim Kaufman, and I'm sure Tim Kaufman can answer any questions you might have regarding those issues. We talked with Glenn DeMartin some more and refined the public safety issues, and that's under the public safety section, one, two, and three. I just created a category under digital government, we can call it anything, but we still would like to look at pushing the issue of nuisance abatement authority for counties, or at least Sedgwick County is an urban county, not for counties in general. We're still interested in looking at an amendment to the Open Records Act to protect law enforcement officers that are working as detention deputies. The, I'm still interested in correcting a mistake that was probably made two years ago when we didn't amend the charter commission statutes relating to county getting urban area status. We discussed that before, that if we wanted to create a charter commission, we'd have to use Johnson County representatives, which doesn't make any sense. And then, just some additional issues that have been discussed by the commissioners that we can talk about. Commissioner Howe has mentioned an issue dealing with the adverse effects of people having their licenses suspended through reckless driving and such. And also, several commissioners have mentioned the issue of whether or not we should be funding the scrap metal database.
Go back to the first one, because I don't know anything about it. You might have to explain what that is.
And I think Commissioner Howe's mentioned it before, but to get into it, and I was gonna mention these two together, because I was going to bring up the fact that I contacted the district attorney, Mark Bennett, and he's been very involved in both of these issues. The driving law suspended, Commissioner Howe, would you like to explain some of your concerns that you've had on that?
Yeah, you know, it seems like almost every day I hear someone got into an accident, and they say, well, the other guy got a ticket or whatever, but they didn't have insurance. And this is a very, very common thing in this community. I don't know how that ties in necessarily to this issue of suspended licenses, but I assume if someone doesn't have a driver's license, they're not gonna get insurance on their vehicle. on their vehicle. There was a news story last week, and it went up, it's, it's actually been out a couple times now. Cake TV News did a story on this. There was 137,000 suspended licensed, excuse me, suspended driver's licenses in Kansas. Out of 137,000, which I think is a shockingly high number, but even worse than that, they said half of them were in Sedgwick County. And so I, I find that very curious. Why do we have such a disproportionate number of those? I, I think the number's high anyway, but why, why Sedgwick County has half of the state's suspended licenses? So I have questions about this. I want to talk to Chief Ramsey and Sheriff, Sheriff Easter, to find out what, what they know about this, or the DA. But the reality is, someone contacted me about three, three or four weeks ago, and they had a suspended license. Turns out their license was suspended administratively by the state of Kansas because of the type of traffic infraction that they received. They, they had a, well, they thought she got a ticket for a left turn, and to me, the, the penalty was very, very harsh for what she did. And again, I don't have the full story. I wasn't there to see it. It's just, from what she tells me, it seemed like it was a very harsh penalty. She had to pay $360 fine, but then she, after she set up payments on the fine, she got a 90-day suspension, which was, for her, is a problem because she, she'll lose her job. So now she has a problem. How's she going to get to work to, to make the money to pay the fine? And for some people in Oaklawn, for example, it's very, it's, they don't even have public transportation. So this is a really big problem, and, and I, I don't know what the answer is, but 70,000 woke me up. I think that there's, there's an issue here. Well, Senator Alita Foskett is very interested in this topic. I'm not suggesting we would be, you know, we wouldn't have suspended license options, but if someone simply makes a traffic infraction, I'm not so sure that a suspension is the best answer. And I don't understand how it got to be such a big number, but I'm concerned about it. I'm not sure what we should do, if anything legislatively, but I think this is a really big issue, this somehow, as alluded, the community as a whole. We don't seem to have a solution in place where we really understand the problem, so...
Commissioner Howell, I think that, Sheriff Easter.
Oh, there he is.
Can you answer a couple of your questions? I'd like to-
Can you go to Mike? Thank you. To answer a couple of your questions on that, if I can get her name or some type of contact, because you can't get your license suspended for not signaling or for turn violations. There has to be something more. Either she didn't come to court, she didn't pay her fines, or she had no insurance. If you don't have insurance, they suspend your license, because you shouldn't be driving without insurance, plain and simple. And so there is certain laws or traffic laws that will get your license suspended. Reckless driving, DUI can, and there's a couple evade and elude. There's a couple of serious traffic violations that can get your license suspended. Most of the folks that I know that have their license suspended is because they didn't show up for court, or they didn't have insurance.
So in her case, she got a ticket for reckless driving, but again, again, I, I haven't talked to the officer to give her the ticket, but there was an enforcement effort made that she's, there was about six or seven different sheriff's officers in the area that were point over drivers, and I think she said she turned the corner too quickly. That was her own words, and she said from that she got a reckless driving charge. I don't know how, if there was any other options. I don't know what else they could have done, but for, for her, and I went and looked this up, it seems like reckless driving is, is almost a total disregard for the law. It's, it's, it's like someone's, you know-
Reckless?
You know, going, yeah, it's just, you know, in my opinion, if, if, from her perspective, and, and she's being honest with me, and I'm not saying she is, I don't, I, I wasn't there, it seemed, it did seem a bit harsh for what she tells me. So again, I don't have any way to validate the truth without talking to people, but-
What?
The reality is, 70,000 has, is a big number, and, and I don't know why they're so, so high, so...
There are a lot of people that don't show up for court.
So, okay, that-
A whole lot of people.
Okay, so, um-
That's why our jail has a lot of misdemeanor folks in it.
That, so you don't show up to court, does that mean that you, you don't get to drive anywhere else? Like, I, I guess I just don't understand the logic behind that.
A lot of times-
That you need to come to court. I get that, but-
A lot of times what happens is, is the judges over a misdemeanor or over in city court will give them another court date, another court date, they get arrested for failure to appear, go back in front of the judge, they give them another court date, and at a certain point, the judge is done with them, they throw them in jail, and they send the stuff up to the state to have it suspended. That's usually what happens. It's not on, usually on the first-time offense.
Well, this is her first-time offense. She hadn't had any accidents that she had.
I'd like to know the name, though, to see if, it seems very odd that we would write a reckless driving ticket simply for what you talked about.
I agree, and I'm very concerned about that. In fact, I went and visited the DA office on her behalf, and frankly, was told this was not their action, it was the state, the Kansas Department of Revenue does it administratively.
Correct.
And that surprised me as well. Besides that, when she signed the ticket, she did not, she was not informed by anybody that this would be a consequence of her, of her signing the ticket, essentially pleading guilty. She did not know that. She was not informed of the penalties. That's also very concerning, but I guess I would also, what you just said a second ago, how many people are in fact in our jail from, from misdemeanor traffic infractions? It started the process to get them in jail. How many people are-
On misdemeanor crimes themselves, I don't know, on traffic infractions, it's right around 25%.
Ah. That's surprising to me. I did not know this.
But that's, that's fail to appear. They've, they have-
Fail to appear.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you get booked on a misdemeanor, you're not staying in jail, but what happens is, is if they don't come to court, they get placed in jail then by the judge.
Even if they're not, like, a threat? They just didn't show up for court? Like, if they're nonviolent?
Oh, yeah. You got to come to court.
No, I get it. I get that.
I mean, and, and we have people that will never, ever, ever show up for court. And so at a certain point, you got to send a message to folks that, well, then you're going to stay here until you answer to the charges.
And how much time do they spend in jail on that type of, uh-
Uh, sometimes they can spend up to a year if they get placed into our custody.
Do they ever go to court during that time?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I'm hopeful that they-
I guess I just was, I would have said, I would have characterized the people incarcerated or pretrial, but they're mostly violent crimes, you know, the bad, really the bad-
We call the municipal court judge quite often to see if we can get people released, mainly because of, of different issues that they have going on. I mean, it is a misdemeanor crime, but I don't blame the judges over there for placing folks finally into our custody that have no, have a total disregard for the law.
I, I feel like I need a, a better understanding exactly. This whole topic to me is, is a big topic that I feel like we can't solve here, but to the extent there's 70,000 in Sedgwick County, that is, that's a big number, and I'm concerned about that, so. It sounds like maybe other issues that tie into this as well. So I need some time to talk with you and, and understand what's going on.
Absolutely. Anytime, sir.
All right. Thanks, Sheriff. We did briefly talk about this before, that, I, now after we started discussing it, I recall we talked about the hundred and some thousand, but the question I've got is, what do we do about this? I mean, and I, I don't know where we go from here, so...
Well, what I was about to say, Mr. Chairman, is, and I was fairly skeptical when I first heard the commissioner talking about this, is the gravity of the problem, but I emailed the district attorney, and Mark Bennett said that this is something that's of a concern, and that he's currently on a criminal justice reform task force that is looking at this specific issue of why there are so many driving while suspended now. You can get suspended for not paying child support, you can get suspended for a number of things in addition to what we've talked about, and they're looking at this because it does have an impact on people's lives in the community and so.
And one of the, one of the thing that the DA said is, and he agrees with the sheriff, that at some point you have to draw the line, but part of what the, the DA is looking at is, after you've reconciled whatever the issue is that you've had, in other words, you've paid your fine, you've been to court, you've paid your child support, whatever it is, that the state policy currently is you continue to stay suspended for the remainder of the six months, and I think the DA would like to see a situation where once you've reconciled whatever your matter is, that you are then reinstated with your license. That's a, a part of the issue he wants to bring up, too. So there's some validity to this.
Okay. But I just don't want to put something on our legislative agenda that says legislation addressing the effects of laws dealing with reckless driving. I mean, that doesn't tell us what we're going to do. We, we've got to have some specific, what are we going to do about it? You know, right now, I don't know what we're going to do.
Well, I would suggest probably, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Commissioner Howell, that we wait and see what this task force does and go by the recommendations of Mr. Bennett and Sheriff, and see how we might want to proceed, but we might be premature trying to put something on our agenda.
May I suggest take the, the phrase reckless driving off this, because I think it is too specific. I don't understand it that much, but I would say that effects dealing with the, the issue of high number of suspended licenses in Sedgwick County, that could be a lot of things, until we understand it more deeply. I just like to have a placeholder on our platform. When we have the understanding, then we could add, you know, add clarity to what this means, but I hate to miss a whole legislative session by not at least having this. And by the way, again, I raised this up about a month, several weeks ago, trying to understand this more deeply, and here we are, you know, still kind of at the same point, but...
Well, and again, when, and when we're developing a platform, we go back and forth between wanting broad concepts on the platform like you just talked about, in order that we can jump in later and support legislation that, that deals with drivers while suspended. And then I also get comments, we want very specific language on very measurable goals that we want on the platform that we can look at. Right now, we could go through, I mean, it would take an enormous amount of time, and since we already have a, a committee looking at this with experts and the district attorneys across the state, it'd be silly for me right now to come up with all the suggestions specifically where we would amend the statute to help address the problem, or even know where to begin on it. I don't know whether it's, it's something we need to look at in terms of whether it's just do away with the sentence once the child support's been paid, or once the fines have been paid, but we need to decide whether we want some general platform positions, or we want to be very specific, and we're not in a position right now to have a specific platform position on this issue, that I, that I see, but...
Okay. Next item?
The next item was, and I think several commissioners, including Commissioner Howell, mentioned the scrap metal issue and funding the state registry on that. I have contacted both the sheriff and the district attorney. Neither of them indicate that their state organizations, I believe, are going to be interested in doing anything with this right now, although Mr. Bennett did say that he was going to talk with the Derek Schmidt Attorney General, see what interest he had in, in getting this funded by the legislature. The problem that they had, the, the Scrap Metal Act was adopted in 2015, I believe, which included the Attorney General keeping this state registry. Apparently, there was some pushback from the scrap metal industry, and as such, this, at some point, this became unfunded, and they're not keeping the registry up to date. And so unless we have, unless the Attorney General is interested in this, unless we can get some state organizations, such as the Sheriff's Association or the Attorney General's Association, I don't know how, how far we want to proceed on this right now.
My perspective is, I thought we had a compromise between the investigators, the law enforcement, and the scrap metal dealers, and they, we all kind of came together in 2014. I think it passed in 14, and maybe I'm wrong, but I think we had a compromise, and it was several years worth of work. Farm Bureau especially, and, and other organizations really pushed hard on this, and you testified in favor of it, and Mark Bennett testified in favor of it. It passed, and we celebrated. We, we had a huge celebration getting this great, this great law passed, and then the state never funded the database, and in fact, you say they haven't funded it recently, they've never funded it. Attorney General's office has never been given the money to do this, and so we had someone come and visit us in our offices this last week, and the reality is, I don't see that local regulations is going to solve this problem, but you think more, the solution we've already passed, it just needs to be funded. I don't even know what it would cost, but is scrap metal an issue still today, or is it not?
Yeah.
If it's an issue-
We don't have near the issues since that law has passed. We're not seeing near the issues that we were seeing in 2014, 15. I think that's part of the reason why KSA, there's other things they want legislation to fund, like mental health care, that they don't want to pile a lot on their agenda for legislators to take a look at, to fund, and this would be one of those things that if they want to fund it, great, we'll support that, but it's not one of the things that's going to make our agenda, if you get it.
Well, I, I think mental health probably is a bigger priority, but it's just interesting they passed a law, and they didn't fund it. We celebrate it as a state for a solution that has never actually been implemented. The, the solution never got implemented, so I, I agree, mental health is a bigger priority, though, so...
Commissioner, I'll forward to you the district attorney's email to me that he sent, and he explains in more detail how, what's going on with that act, but I guess I would hesitate the county commission getting involved on an issue that the Sheriff's Association or the district attorneys aren't getting involved in. That's... And the third one is, and we've had commissioners indicate some support for expanded gaming in Sedgwick County or south central Kansas, if some of these revenues can be diverted to address or address behavioral health needs, and again, that's just an issue.
Does this mean opening the dog track up?
Huh?
Is that what this means? I don't understand what this means.
I just, expanded gaming could be sports gambling, which is going to be brought up by this session. It could be extending additional licenses. I don't, I have no idea what this means. It's just been brought up by commissioners.
It means that, that sports gaming is going to be a part of this legislative session, and when this is our chance to weigh in in support of expanding the gaming, because the other states are doing it, or our citizens can go across state line and do it, that's fine, but we want, we'd like to tie it in to continue this, this message that says the proceeds going to address our behavioral health needs, and it's in a- Kind of not wordiness, right, because I want to make sure that we do not support dog track.
Well, you can't, I'd be against that.
Then I'm going to vote against this.
Okay. Then you can be against it?
Okay. I just want to be clear that dog track is not something that I support, but I would support expanded gaming, if we were very clear on what that meant.
Okay. We can talk about that some more.
And then the last thing I added was just the joint partner statement, similar to the joint partner statement that we had in last year's platform.
Yeah, that's good.
It's frankly, last year we had it at the very top of our platform, and that's something for the commission to decide. I don't know why we'd put the joint partner statement at the beginning, I'd put it at the end, put our issues at the forefront, but then let the legislature know what we want to, you know, what issues that are key, key issues for all of our, our partners in the region, the Wichita, Regional Chamber of Commerce, City of Wichita. I will say that, well, I think the Chamber of Commerce is ready to adopt their platform. I think the City of Wichita is meeting maybe a staff meeting next, next week to start their platform discussion, so I guess until we see that, we, we won't entirely know that we agree on these joint issues, but it's hard to argue that they aren't going to be supporting transportation, or behavioral health, or workforce development, so... So that's what we have right now, and just appreciate any comments and direction.
I think we have two more things. I, I think you've got the information I talked about yesterday at, at the Board of Canvassing about expanding the ability for military families living overseas to, to be able to vote, and so I want to know where we are at, is that a possibility of including in our state legislative agenda?
I think you're referring to an article, Mr. Chairman, that was in County News, in which two counties in Oregon have introduced a mobile voting pilot program, which allows uniformed overseas citizens to vote via a voting app. That's certainly something that we could, we could look into adding to our, our platform as well.
You know, I'm a very strong supporter of our military and making it so that it's convenient for our military families that are serving our nation overseas, I think is something that we ought to seriously consider.
Can we have our Secretary of State weigh in before we push something? Because if he's against it, it won't go anywhere.
Well, he's against Senate Bill 130, so I don't know that I care about where he weighs in.
And it's not going anywhere.
And it's not going anywhere.
Tabitha got a copy of the article that we're talking about yesterday, and I think she'd like to maybe weigh in on.
I was just going to make sure you understand how the process currently works, and we discussed this yesterday. Obviously, I'm not opposed to anything that makes it easier for our military and overseas voters to cast their ballot. This is very new, and I haven't had a chance to look at it. I'm aware of it. I read the article. I was aware of it before this article, but it is using blockchain technology for voting, and that's very new to the election industry. This is very, very new, which doesn't mean it's necessarily bad, it's just very new. We have, in a presidential election, this would affect hundreds of voters in Sedgwick County. We're not looking at a significant number, but it is very important that we serve these voters, and we serve them well. Right now, what they can do is they can submit a registration application even on election day. They are not governed by the same laws that every other voter in the country is. They have a very specific federal and state laws that apply only to them. They can have a ballot emailed to them, they can then email that ballot back to us. However, there are some that have expressed issues with being able to do that, because if they, we have some who do not have access to a printer to print out the ballot and then fill it out, and then they can take a picture and email the picture back to us, but sometimes getting that ballot filled out is a little bit of a challenge for them. So there are some challenges that we face. We, it is, they are the category of voters who have the easiest, it's easiest for them to vote out of anybody in the country, because they can email back and forth, they can even register and get a ballot on election day, as long as they send it out to us in time for us to email them the ballot, then vote it, and get it back before 7:00 PM. But there's always options to improve. The process on our end is very clunky, it's very time-consuming, this looks like a significant improvement to that, but it is still very new, and I don't know a whole lot about it yet, so. But I would agree, I would like to see where the Secretary of State falls on this, just because this, they, there was, years ago, there was a trial of a different way of doing it that Sedgwick County participated in, and it did not go well, and I'm talking years ago. And I'm barely, I just started working in the office when that occurred, so I don't know a lot about it, but it was something that they tried a different way, and it didn't, if I recall correctly, didn't go really smoothly, so we just want to make sure we're being deliberate and careful to make sure we protect their right to vote, not just make it easier, if that makes sense. But I'm absolutely open to looking into this. If it works the way this article says, it would be great, yeah.
Well, I think we need to keep exploring this. I don't want to drop it whatsoever, because these are the people that are overseas fighting for our freedom here in the United States, so if we're not supporting them, why are they over there supporting us?
Oh, anyway, commissioners, Tom, you're not done?
Well, I think we ought to just, why don't we have Tabitha look into this and bring us some more information? I think it might be a little bold to get out with a legislative agenda when we don't really know all the facts yet and all that, so maybe Tabitha can task with getting us some information, and that's where I feel first, but. The other thing is, right now, when someone goes into our jail, the Medicaid, all of their care, everything is terminated. NACO is pushing through federally the ability to keep the folks on that, which would significantly impact the fees that it's costing us in the jail. And I think we need to, we've never really had a federal legislative agenda, but I think if we have one, and we have a federal legislative coordinator up there, that this probably ought to be something that we ought to consider to put on our federal agenda.
Yeah, we need to discuss how we want to handle, talk to the manager about how we want to handle the federal agenda. We need to probably talk to Mr. Davenport in Washington and see, see what he wants from the county, but Tom, do you have anything you want to add?
I did, I did forward that on to Mr. Davenport yesterday. I mean, at some point, Mike is right, we need to, the commission needs to look at the federal, the federal agenda. He is shaping that now. He has talked to Public Works and the sheriff and the DA, he's talked to all the major players with county government. He has crafted a template, which he is finalizing, but I think it should be brought before the body of the commission and discussed. This would go on to that particular list. And I've talked briefly with the sheriff about it yesterday, because what we need now is some type of data to show harms to local taxpayers, and we'll be somewhat limited in the kind of data we can achieve under the current collection methods. I think the sheriff knows how many, clearly knows how many inmates he has, clearly knows how much he's spending per year on medical for those inmates. What he doesn't know is who's Medicaid eligible and who's not, and I think that's part of the data that would be good to know, so we could put that on to this agenda item. So we're working actively right now to try to solidify this and place it on to what could be a federal agenda for us.
Very good.
Question on that. Is it terminated or is it suspended while they're incarcerated and then picks back up when they're released?
They're terminated upon incarceration, and then what we're looking at locally, what we've asked for is a suspension rather than termination, because when they're released, they have to reapply and go through that full process to become eligible again.
I understand it's more than just Medicaid, though. It sounds, from the article that I was reading, why if you're getting military benefits, they terminate that, they terminate everything. And actually, that could be a problem if they're supporting a family and their military benefits are suspended now, just impacted a family.
I don't know about that. I know that the traditional public benefits, Medicaid, TANF, those sorts of things, there is terminated.
Well, I remember we, I asked one time if we were tracking to see how many veterans were in our jail. Are we tracking that?
We are, if they disclose to us they're a veteran.
Okay.
A lot of veterans won't disclose, and then also the caveat to that is, they have to spend longer than 10 days in jail. Just because they came into jail and got booked, doesn't mean they get terminated. They have to spend 10 days or longer in jail. I don't know if that's a federal law, I don't know what that is, but they do terminate.
From the article I was reading, all federal benefits sounded like were terminated and only go to jail, so we need to take a closer look at that, see what we can put on our federal agenda.
So pay your speeding tickets, right?
It's not federal.
Jail, suspended license, that's been a long meeting.
I wouldn't mind to have a federal legislative platform, but it sounds like it's not tied to their January, you know, trigger.
No.
Our January trigger is, of course, the legislative session that Kansas does, and so we could do this, it could be a separate document, we could work on this.
It is, yes.
I feel like we need to understand this more deeply to know what to do here.
Hey, anything else, Mr. Poon?
No, I just remind you that we have two former legislators on the commission. They understand how difficult it is to get laws changed, and we have a very good lobbyist, Jason Watkins, but the more things we pile on our platform, the more difficult it's going to be to achieve success in any one, one matter, at least that's my opinion on this, so. Be my final comment.
Very good, thank you. What do you got next?
The only thing I want to, just after Chris's comments about the plumbing board, I feel like we need to put this on the December 4th meeting. It'll be under, be under appointments, under Papun's section, but if we have no problem with that, we're going to go ahead and put that on for the 4th, even though Commissioner Howell will be gone. I think that was it.
Very good. Commissioners, do you have anything today to bring up? All right, staff, the electeds, Tabitha.
I just wanted to thank the opportunity, I took the opportunity to thank the county for all the support that our office received after the election, with the county support staff, working as county technicians, and IT department basically pausing in order to support us on election day with technical support, and just really wanted to acknowledge that and express our appreciation for all the help.
Very good, thank you.
And it saves a lot of taxpayer money, because I don't have to hire these people.
Well, the taxpayer is still paying for all that, though.
I know.
Saves, saves. Very good. All right, let's go to work, thank you all.